So we are live and we're ready to go. Are you good?
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the March 28th meeting regarding our CDBG 2023 Annual Action Plan, our 2020-2024 Consolidated Planned Substantial Amendment and discussion regarding the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program. It is 6:30 PM and I'm here joined by Chair Sean Patterson Howard and City Council Member Derek Thompson. So, thank you. So with that, I'm going to begin with our agenda and PowerPoint presentation. It will be just a very quick overview. We will be discussing the 2023 Annual Action Plan and allocations as well as the addressing some of the pressing community needs that we have around public facilities and infrastructure projects. So every five years, we're required to complete a five-year consolidated plan that we submit to HUD. And that plan provides a strategic vision and priorities. Does the city has indicated are how we would like to allocate federal funds that we receive. And these funds are to address, you know, decent housing, suitable living conditions, and expanded economic opportunities. And then based on the five-year plan, we also go ahead and cement an annual action plan based on the five-year plan. So our five-year high priority needs include the following. Expand the supply of quality, affordable housing, elimination of slum and blight, improving public facilities and infrastructure, and supporting public services, preventing homelessness and providing housing and services to the homeless, supporting revitalization of neighborhoods through code enforcement, expand economic development opportunities, and implement the grant programs in a much more effective and efficient manner. For 2023, our CDBG and home allocations are the following. 1.6 million for CDBG, 683,000 for the home program, and so for a total of $2.2 million. So for 2023, we're proposing the following in our annual action plan, and this plan is posted on the website. And we're looking to allocate $1.2 million to address public facilities and infrastructure needs. We have capital projects are very expensive. And so we're looking to address some of the needs, some of the immediate needs using CDBG funds. And so what we're proposing are addressing renovation of playgrounds, the Dole Center, the Armory, the Stevens House, and the fire stations. Obviously, we're not going to be able to do that with just 1.2 million, but we are indicating in the annual action plan that we're looking to allocate our funds to address one or more of these priorities. And then for the home program, we have been allocated and we're proposing to allocate $512,000 towards tenant-based rental assistance. There is a great need to ensure that we have housing stability in the city. So we're looking to launch a rental assistance program. We're required per HUD statute to set aside 15% for a Choto set aside, 102,000, and then administration of 68,000. In addition, we are looking to repurpose, reallocate home funds from prior years that totaled $2 million. And again, we're looking to use it for rental assistance. As we've seen, our eviction cases before, the courts are very high. We have a lot of folks who are still hurt by the pandemic. And so we're trying to ensure that we create housing stability. And based on the data we have seen and the number of court cases before the Mount Vernon Court system, we believe that allocating these funds to address rental assistance will have a significant impact in ensuring people do not become homeless. And then the 108 loan. So the city is can allocate, can submit an application up to five times their annual allocation. So it's $8 million to address the public infrastructure needs of the city. So we're looking to establish a public facilities loan fund. Currently, we're looking to address the needs of the Armory, the Dole Center, the Stevens House, and fire stations. We have posted a draft application. It's a very early pre-application that is on the URA website. So CMBNY.com backslash URA is again a very early pre-application. But the total, when you look at the total needs, when you look at everything that needs to be done, we are projecting that it would cost $26 million. And again, we only have $8 million that we can allocate from the 108. That is the maximum we could receive from HUD. It is based on five times our annual allocation. So we would need to determine the priorities, looking at where we can make the most significant impact. And this is an opportunity for residents of the city to weigh in and provide comments on the proposal of allocating funds to address, you know, public infrastructure needs for the city. And the reason why we're looking to do that is, if we are able to open the Armory, then we would be able to provide services to seniors and children in our city. We could, at the Dole Center, we can expand and provide more programming there. But we need to address bathrooms. We need to address the senior wing. There are other needs in the Dole Center, but we may be able then to do even more programming. And then the Stevens House, again, we would be using that. It is right across, as you know, from the Dole Center, we would be able to open it up to do more programming for youth and seniors. And then the fire stations, there's a lot of needs there to repair the roofs and other infrastructure needs. So we want to make sure that we have a place where that our firefighters have, you know, safe working conditions as well. So with that, I'm also going to submit to you a projected timeline for the annual action plan. And for the five-year plan, we are looking to do an amendment to include the 108 loan. So if we move forward, I have to include that as part of our five-year plan. That requires a 30-day public comment period. The 2023 Annual Action Plan is a 30-day public comment period. My goal is to submit no later than August 16th. That is a drop dead deadline for those two. We're looking to submit by May 1st. On the 108 loan, we can program application, we may take a little bit longer to ensure that we're in alignment, that we have consensus, that we have scope of work identified, and to really outline how we're going to prioritize these capital project needs. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the mayor.
If possible, you're looking to do the Section 108 Loan Application to HUD by May 1st?
If possible.
No, I just wanted to say that because it's not listed on here. So I wanted to just repeat it again, you know, so no one says that we kind of slipped that in there.
No, and I did not put in the date in here because we still internally have to come to an alignment in terms of the scope of work because there is so much that needs to be done. There is, as you'll look at the application that's on the website, on the URA website, the scope of work totals $26 million. We only have 8 million. So internally, we have to have discussions how we're going to identify and how we're going to allocate those funds. So I have not purposely put in a May 1st deadline until we are able to get some sort of consensus. I will have a second public hearing specifically on the 108. And so on April 17th, here at the City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. But again, it's an opportunity for the community to really weigh in because we want to make sure that we address pressing community needs and being able to address services for seniors and children are a huge priority in addressing public safety. So there's a lot, but there's only so much money we have from federal funding. With that, Mayor, I'll open up to you, and I'm going to stop the screen share.
Okay. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner Bolivar. That's mighty presidential. I have two mics now. I think, thank you for the overview and the discussion that we are having, that we're having today. So again, you know, always for transparency and to educate the public, HUD's purpose is the elimination of blight in a community as well as dealing with housing and public infrastructure. And so when we talk about the fire department being able to benefit from HUD monies, it is because the fire department's mission is the protection of people and property. And it is burnt-out buildings that cause blight the quickest in a community. And that is really what makes the fire department eligible versus the police department or City Hall properties, DPW, other facilities that operate in the city of Mount Vernon. And so, you know, we know that we closed the Armory down about a year and a half ago because there were conditions there. We closed the Station 4 of the Fire Department on Oak Street because we had been dealing with temporary and rapidly crumbling structure in that building, which was unsafe and unhealthy for the firefighters. And that was closed down right around the same time, I believe, back in, you know, probably July of 2021. We went out and got bids, not bids, we went out and got engineering reports. Four different areas of engineering, environmental, structural, mechanical, and electrical. So those are the four areas that we had each of our city properties evaluated on. The Armory came back at $9 million. And that's 9 million prior to this last round of inflation. The Fire Department's Station 4 on Oak Street came back at approximately, I believe, like $5.6 million. Oh, no, I remember, trust me, I know my numbers. Okay, you know, came back at that level. The... Yeah. So, you know, those buildings by themselves, which are currently closed, would take this entire amount to get to a place where we might or may not be able to open them. The Dole Center is open, but there are renovations needed to make them ADA accessible, to make them ADA accessible as well as, thank you, to make them ADA accessible, you know, and comfortable bathrooms, replacements, things of that nature. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there's not a favoritism towards any department, but it is what is an eligible expense of HUD. This is not just general open money. It has to be eligible under HUD, just like when we received the American Rescue Plan monies, there were categories and there were projects that were eligible. And so we just wanted to kind of explain some of the eligibility costs. So what also makes the Dole Center and the Armory and the Stevens House and Parks and Playgrounds eligible is because they are used for, you know, really the public benefit. They are benefiting low-to-moderate-income residents in the city because they're open and they're providing services and events directly to the community. And so because they are a direct public benefit, that is what makes them eligible. Now, City Hall, the Police Department, the DPW Yard, even though those provide public benefit, they don't provide public benefit within the boundaries of HUD funding for this specific thing. And so I just really wanted to make that clear. So as this conversation continues and people begin to look in and drill down on a few things that they would have a greater understanding on what is and what is not eligible. I think that's all I have to say.
So with that, I have no idea if the commissioner can speak so that the community can hear from you all on things of the capital project needs.
You know, and clearly, each of these buildings are going to need far more than what we can do in them in the initial point. But we want to get our, you know, you make small investments that will build up to everything that we will eventually need. We have to start somewhere. They say, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? And so we want to make sure that these buildings are safe, that there's no environmental hazards, that they're handicap accessible, and that the envelopes are sealed so that they do not continue to take on more water damage. Okay. So.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Commissioner Bolivar, and the Fire Commissioner, Deborah Norman. I just want to have it on the record, too, that we have been, all of us, discussing for several years. This is not the first time that we've been discussing ways that we possibly could use HUD money to repair the infrastructures of the firehouses. You all said it. It's without a doubt, we need to get those firehouses repaired. And you had an assessment, engineering report, mechanical, and I believe it was about 5.5, like you said, man, just for the Oak Street Firehouse. I'm not going to repeat what you all just said. I just want to strongly advocate that when this money possibly comes available, when we put the applications, that again, that we look at most we can do to get the Oak Street Firehouse open, if possible. Just want to put that on record and say thank you for the opportunity.
So I have a question for you.
Yes.
Currently, we have a temporary fire station. But we also have three other fire stations that are open, that have leaks, that have damage, that have holes, and are challenged. And so are you saying it's more of a priority to reopen Station 4? Or is it an equal priority to make sure that Stations 1, 2, and 3 are habitable? I mean, more than habitable, habitable and safe? Because the fire department doesn't just, they're not just there for eight hours a day. It's 24 hours and they live there as well, since they have 24-hour shifts.
Very good question, ma'am. I am definitely saying it's equal. We have major problems at the other firehouses, too. Obviously, we have four firehouses right now strategically located. That's why we're spending the money for a temporary one. We cannot afford to lose a firehouse. We need four. The truth is, we need more than four, but they're equally, so I'm not going to say just get Oak Street open. They all need to be addressed. If we have to get down to looking at the pots of money, then we just have to look at how we assess what we could do to this house or at that house. They're all equally. We have four. We cannot lose a firehouse. We need more. So it's equal. But if possible, let's try to get the Oak Street Firehouse open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker. I mean, if we're on fire, do you want to just continue with fire? And so then, fire can be done?
Neil Ashmead, Lieutenant of Mount Vernon Fire. I actually want to touch what the commissioner spoke on. It's Station 4 would be priority, but we also want to make sure that the other stations don't fall into disarray as Station 4 did. So we don't want to forget about other stations. We want to upkeep them, be proactive, more proactive with it than anything else. Just so we don't fall, just so we don't go back, repeat ourselves again when we do a Station 4. Because Station 4 was neglected for a long time, a long time. And nothing doing any administration now, but we saw administration after administration come in, and it was totally neglected. And that's why I got to where it got to right now. I was stationed at Station 4 along with Mr. Daniels over there, and we were there for a long time. And we're advocates about getting that place together, and we slowly watched it fall apart. So just Station 4 is priority, but let's not forget about other stations. It would be cheaper to keep them, to maintain them right now than to wait till we get to what Station 4 did. All right?
I agree with that wholeheartedly. Since we're on fire, you want to continue with fire?
How you doing? Firefighter Jason Daniels, Mount Vernon Fire Department. Um, I came in late, so basically, the telling of it, like what Neil Ashmead said, we've been at Station 4 for practically our whole career, and we were big advocates. We plus, we did our own work trying to keep the building alive, plus other firefighters as well. But, um, once again, like he said, let's not let the other departments, the other firehouses get how that one is. But they're slowly getting there. And the faster we prevent it, the better it would be. We're just hoping that you can bring Station 4 back and not let the other three departments get like that one station house as well. Because we definitely don't need that. I don't think we can find any more temporaries.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Hello. My name is Kathleen Walker Pickney, Commissioner of Recreation. Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, Derek Thompson, and Commissioner. One of the things I want to discuss is it's so important for the Armory as well as the Dole Center to come back online, to come back so that people in the community are able to come back and enjoy a safe haven. It's not just a place for them to go and hang out, even though they do that. But you know, when the seniors are together or the youth are together and they have a positive attitude, a positive atmosphere, it brings positivity out into the community. And you know, as of right now, as you see, we have a lot of crime. We have a lot of things going on, not just in Mount Vernon, but places. But some of this will help if we can get more programming into Dole, get it up to par, get it up and running, as well as the Armory. We have seniors that's on the north and the south. Not necessarily do they cross over. Some reason is because they just don't want to, but some is because they just can't. They just cannot get from one to another. And we want to keep that open for them. And also at the Armory, we have the Rose Simon program that used to be there, that is now all at the Dole. So everybody's kind of compacted at the Dole. It's very important to make sure that the ones with special needs, disability are also taken care of and that location at the Armory is not there no more. And we want to make sure that we are able to give them good quality programs.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
And this is my director of the Dole. He's just going to give a little word about the Dole.
Good evening. Sean Paul Wade, Director of Social and Community Services at the Dole Center. Proper protocol has already been established. I just want to say thank you for giving us this platform to be able to speak tonight. As someone who is at the Dole Center on a daily basis and weekends, I just want to say that while the community has been supportive in the fact that we've been able to come together and merge all of the different programming that we had at the Armory and the Dole Center into one building, there are challenges, like the commissioner said. For some of them, it wasn't about just whether or not they wanted to be able to go over to the Dole Center as much as it was about being restricted or unable to go to the Dole Center. And likewise, for the Rose Simon program, the challenge is that for the commissioner and myself, who are eager to follow the vision that the city administration has in terms of bringing programming to our youth and our seniors and our citizens that are challenged, is that we unfortunately now have a finite amount of space. And that is why getting the Armory back open is so vital. Because right now, all the programming that we have is compacted into the Dole Center. And as beautiful as the community has been, and not only just the citizens, but the CBOs and the other partners who are coming back to the Dole Center with programming and requests for space, we just don't have enough space. So anything that could be done to be able to open the doors for the Army would be outstanding. The improvements to the Dole Center itself, so that way, one day, it can be the gleaming center for technology for the community and opportunity and space for exploring, for craftsmanship, for technology learning, all those things that we like to provide in our community centers. We need a little bit of help. So I appreciate that, and I thank you for thinking about us, as well as the Stevens House. I have to bring that up because I think that that is just a unutilized resource for the city. There are a number of different things that can happen in that building for all the demographics in the city. And it's something that we really want to be able to put back online so that way we can utilize it properly. Thank you for your time.
Can you speak to how many children you currently serve under the Rose Simon program and what your vision is for the future if you had more space?
Sure. So the director of, the director of the Rose Simon program is Pam Lawful. However, they currently serve 31 children. And those children come every day. And then they also have a program on Saturdays that typically has anywhere from 8 to 15 that may attend. And they're a little bit older, out-of-school age, and it's more of a social program for them. So that's the number of youth that we have in the Rose Simon program that are currently. Now, as far as expanding it, I know that I've already engaged in conversations with the school district because 31 doesn't comprehend, that doesn't even encompass the amount of students that would be eligible for that program. And while there may be challenges with some of the new laws in regards to how you can apply to get into the program, we also have been willing to give them workshops and information and be able to work hand-in-hand with the school district so that way, these children and these families can also benefit from this incredible program.
I do believe that the Rose Simon program is the only municipally-run program for individuals with other abilities in our region. You know, in other communities, they're run by private not-for-profits. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't believe that there's anyone else signed up to speak? If I could just, you know, and then you wrap up. Yes.
Is the money allowed to do anything else in the firehouse or just to repair the firehouse?
Like what?
Can the fire, can we, will we be able to incorporate training, like training?
No, this is just capital. This is just capital repair, it's capital construction. No problem. You know, so as you've heard, we've had fire, we've had recreation come up. And I'm, you know, sure there will be others that will write in who weren't here. This was advertised in the newspaper and on email blasts and, I believe, social media.
Correct.
Like we said, we have over $26 million in potential projects and less than one-third of the funding through this that we would even potentially need. And most people know that once you start a project, you oftentimes need change orders because there's cost overruns. By the time this is approved, there could be more inflation. This is not money, so this is federal money. And so through this federal money, it has, we have to use prevailing wage. So it's not, yeah. So when you're talking about that, you're almost cutting this funding by about 40%, really. It's not like you can go out just to the low, low bidder. You have to go out to the best value within the federal guidelines, and that is prevailing wage. And so this is, while it sounds to most individuals like a lot of money, $8 million when you come to construction is not. Like we said, the estimate that came in for the Armory by itself is $9 million. And that is from a year ago. That was the estimated cost estimate for Station 4 by itself, $5.6 million. And, you know, that's based on either tearing it down and building new the same size that's there or really what we know we need over in that part of town is something larger. Because that's where most of your development is happening and all of your new big buildings are going. You really need a Station 4 that is more on the size of a Station 2 and a Station 11. You really need a Station 4 that is more on the size of a Station 2 and a Station 3, because it's becoming even more densely populated than other parts of town. You know, with the Dole Center, the Stevens House, like I said, there are a lot of competing priorities. And we will have to make decisions based on, like you said, not allowing things to deteriorate to a level that we've seen in the past. So, you know, starting to fix some things, but this money is not going to answer all things, not even in one building. Right? And so we're going to start where we can and continue to take all of the input from the community. We're also working with the city's Capital Projects Board, you know, and they are weighing in on these decisions. And we will continue to accept, I guess, the comments from the public. And we will have another Section 108 hearing in about two and a half weeks, on April 17. So, you know, please, if there are things that you want to add, please come back at that time, or you could also send your comments in in writing, correct?
Correct. And the other thing I want to highlight is, it is very important for us to hear from the community because what this really means is our entire CDBG allocation will be going towards capital project needs. And so we will not be funding economic development. We will not be funding public services. And the community needs to understand that because these are huge immediate needs right now. And we believe that we can make a significant impact if we have the Armory open and running so that we can address the needs of children and seniors that way, address the needs at the Dole Center, address the needs of the Rose Simon program, ensure that our firefighters are working in, with, you know, in buildings where the roofs are not leaking and that they are not in hazardous conditions. So these are really, really tough decisions, and we just want to make sure the public understands why we're looking to do this. And we will look at other funding streams outside of CDBG to address economic development, to address the needs of the community, looking at other funding streams.
Yes. True.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The other thing I just wanted to add is that the Dole Center is also known as kind of the hub in case of emergency. Just like when the temperature dropped, we was the only place that had space for people to come and get out of the cold so that they didn't freeze, that we was the place to come. If there's a fire, if there's a flood, if there's anything, God forbid, the Dole Center would be the emergency location. So we definitely need to keep it up to par with everything. It needs to be renovated. And there's no other place except for Dole as far as city-owned, that we can put people in case of emergency.
And people come, correct?
Oh, definitely.
People come.
Yeah, I mean, during COVID, whatever it might be, like after that, I'm saying, but this is the place where people have to come in case of an emergency.
Like you said, it's where we use for our cold blue days, the Warming Center.
Yep.
It's, you know, what we use if there are major fire incidents and we have families that we need to bring there to be processed for the Red Cross. It's where we have our Rose Simon. We have other youth programs. We have our senior programs over there, a lot of community cultural activities. So, you know, we're really well aware, we need all of our facilities opening up to par. But we have to start somewhere, and so we're going to have to make hard decisions.
Yes, thank you.
Right now, we don't have a priority. Right now, this is a hearing for us to hear from the public.
Can you get on?
As a Mount Vernon resident, who children actually went to the Dole Center, I do care about, not just the fire department, right? So I just want to know what the priority of the city is, because the Dole Center is very important. My children went to the Dole Center, too old to even go there anymore. So I do respect the Dole Center. And I do understand the needs that provide for the community. So what's the city's priority as far as getting things done?
Well, like I said, there are, you know, the city is not one person. The city is a combination of people. And these are conversations that we're still having in the Capital Projects Board. These are conversations that we will continue to have with our commissioners. These are conversations that we will continue to have amongst the City Council and the Board of Estimate and continue to hear the residents. Like we said, this $8 million is not enough to do everything, right? And we can either try and put all of it into one project. And as firefighter Daniel said, other things continue to go down, or we use it as a stopgap to stop some of the deterioration that we see happening in buildings that we cannot afford to close.
And you did say a deadline. Are we going for it by when?
So for the 108, we just, there isn't a hard deadline for that. So we have to make sure that we identify how we want to move forward. So we are still having these conversations.
All right.
Right. And, you know, the longer we have the conversations, because we can get into analysis paralysis. And we'll be sitting here this time next year, still discussing how we're going to use the money. And so we're going to actually have to, you know, have a real deadline because it's going to take time for this to be processed. And all the while, the buildings continue to deteriorate and potentially impact our ability to provide services in the ways that we need to. We do have some ARPA dollars that we will use that are more flexible, that we can use for projects over in the police station. They have, you know, projects like HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. We were able to use some, utilize some of this money, I know, to do the heating because we lost heat totally in Station 3, which is on Third Street on the coldest night of the year, where I believe it was six degrees. It was Christmas Eve.
I was there.
You were there. And I came over there with space heaters that we had for my house and went and from, you know, got from Home Depot. So, you know, we understand very well that these were issues that when I campaigned back in 2019, I'd walked through most of the city buildings and talked about how all of those were a priority. Unfortunately, you know, when you get in office and you realize there's no savings, there's no ability to bond. And then we went through COVID. It was a challenge. But slowly but surely, we are trying to bring these buildings into, into basic compliance, right? Because if these buildings weren't owned by the city, we'd be shutting them down. And that's what I'm, I'm a former HUD inspector. And, you know, it's kind of hard to violate people when our buildings are in such great violation themselves. And as I was taught by Mr. Holt, President of Local 107, we can't leave dangers. We can't go fight dangerous conditions to return to dangerous conditions. And, you know, there are people who are saying, I shouldn't have closed down Station 4. I shouldn't have closed down the Armory. Well, would've, should've, could've, right? But people didn't do what they might have been able to do during their time and their season. But until someone falls through a floor, which we had the potential of in Station 4, yes or no? And until a structural wall collapses, when you see big gaping holes in between the bricks, which is more than just brick pointing. That's not brick pointing, that's structural. When you have a flyer, fire floor where the apparatuses sit on, that are being held up by wooden shims in the basement, that were supposed to be there for six months to a year and sat there for 16 years, when in the Armory, we have trees that are growing in the Armory, in the Armory, trees, holes in the floor. What we have become used to and what we have accepted in Mount Vernon over the years and the decades is declining conditions, right? Whether it's in our buildings or with the equipment that we use to provide services daily. And so, yes, we had people driving garbage trucks with a stick to hold down the gas or to use on the brake and putting ropes in the door handle and putting it around their body to keep the door closed, right? In our police cars, we had water coming in and they couldn't even sit on, in their seats. And in the fire department, we had ladders that we weren't sure if the ladders were going to go up when you got to the scene. And we found out on one day that as we were over a scene of a fire, that that ladder broke. And that firefighter could have dropped into a flame and been killed, but thank God they were not. So we cannot continue to wait until things deteriorate to a level that it becomes such a crisis or ask our staff to continue to function out of, operate, and use equipment that you don't know if it's going to do what it's supposed to do, and it does. So we have to find some solutions. And this is just the beginning. Trust and know that we are looking into all types of different forms of funding opportunities so that we can bring all of our buildings back online. And we're doing that with the competing priorities of dealing with infrastructure issues and being able to fill potholes and pave streets and fix parks and bring lighting back. And then making sure that our staff, that we're not continuing to just be the training ground for other municipalities because we can't pay our staff a decent living wage for them to stay here and continue to work in hazardous conditions. So, you know, it's no fun, but it is the necessary hard work of government that we are sitting here and we are willing to dig down in and do. Because the city of Mount Vernon deserves better. And we are stretching ourselves to find ways to do better for the community.
Now, I just want to add on to that, that none of this occurred overnight, right? This is decades of neglect within the city. And we finally have, under this administration, we finally have things brought to the table and not just having someone warm in a seat. We're addressing the issues within the city. And it's not going to be pretty, because most cities, when they go through their struggles, they're addressing one thing that has happened in the city. Our entire city has been neglected for decades. That's why you have your fire departments and your Dole Center, your Armory and everything else. And the city police department and city-owned buildings. And as the mayor said, if other buildings within our community were in the conditions that our city-owned buildings are in, we would have shut them down. So how do we look shutting down other places when we should be shutting ourselves down for allowing things to go on like this, you know? So, thank God that, you know, COVID was horrible, but it was also a blessing in disguise as well because we got those ARPA funds to address a lot of things that have been crushed over the years. So those ARPA funds helped us tremendously, but those were still not enough because our entire city needs funding and our entire city needs to be revitalized. And it's going to take some time. It didn't occur overnight, and it's not going to be fixed overnight, but we are on the right path.
And I just want to add one thing to that. I don't know, you know, if our residents remember several years ago that the school district came to the city and asked to vote in support of a $100 million bond, right? A $100 million bond just to fix the buildings. And not even necessarily to make them all beautiful, but get them to a place, you know, where you could really, really function. Unlike the school district, the city of Mount Vernon doesn't have a bond rating, and we don't have an ability to go out and do that. So when you don't have ability to borrow money and you don't have reserves or savings, we're left to find very innovative ways to address some of the most challenging things that we're dealing with here in our city. And so this Section 108 loan program is something that we sat down with HUD and wanted to know, you know, really what could we utilize this money for? And so this is not money that we're going to get every year. And so we have to make sure that we are utilizing this well. This is really five years of funding that we're holding up to do some critical projects. And so if someone told you, you were going to take five years of your pay and it was going to have to go into something, you would definitely want to make sure that you make the right choices. And that's what we are attempting to do here. So I truly thank those who came out. I don't know, do we have anything on Facebook? Let me just check. The, no questions, no comments on the Facebook feed. You pulled it up?
Yes, no.
Okay. And so with that, we'll let Deputy Commissioner Bolivar close out.
So thank you, everyone who came out this evening and advocated for all of the needs that, all of the immediate needs that the city has. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Thompson for being here this evening as well. For those of you who are watching and listening, and we encourage you to submit your public comments in writing or attend the next public meeting that will take place April 17 at 6:00 PM at City Council chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.